Regular meeting of the Thirty-Sixth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Gravlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kedekel.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
Councilmember Turbrack. And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Here. The first audit of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Baker with support by Councilmember Kedekel. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravlin.
Yes.
Kedekel.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes. And now I see we have Pastor Adam Groh with us tonight. Please stand for the invocation.
Let's pray. And Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us, beautiful weekend we've had here in Berkeley and just celebrating and having a good time and remembering what we love about the city and Berkeley days, and we thank you for success that at those this past weekend. But we ask your blessing on this city and on those families that attended there and all the families in the city and individuals as well. Would you bless them and guide them? Would you bless this meeting and give wisdom to all the people around the table tonight in Jesus' name? Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a Department of the City or a member of City staff, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Well, having said all that, now then we are ready to move on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's Consent Agenda?
Approval of the Minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular Thirty-Sixth City Council meeting on Monday, May 2, 2016. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number thirteen oh two. Resolution number R sixteen sixteen, matter of recognizing Tina Edgar for her service as City Council Member for the City of Berkeley from 2013 to 2016. Resolution number R seventeen sixteen, matter of considering a Coalition for Transit, ACT.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kedekel.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gravlin.
Yes.
Kedekel.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes. And now we come to the Regular Agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's Regular Agenda?
Recognitions Presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Gravlin to read R seventeen sixteen.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, considering a Coalition for Transit, also known as ACT. Whereas Southeast Michigan needs a safe, reliable, well-funded public transportation system to compete with other world-class metropolitan areas like Phoenix, Minneapolis, and Seattle; and whereas Southeast Michigan spends substantially less money on public transportation than other Midwestern regions; and whereas Southeast Michigan's four counties and major population centers, including Pontiac, Mount Clemens, Detroit, and Ann Arbor, are not effectively connected by regional transit; and whereas a large majority of residents, eighty percent, according to the Brooking Institution, cannot access the region's major job centers by public transit, to the detriment of both employers and potential employees; and whereas seniors and peoples with disabilities in our region are underserved by an unreliable system that prevents them from safe and independent travel in the region; and whereas younger generations continue to look outside of Southeast Michigan to relocate in regions that are more desirable with effective, reliable regional transit; and whereas residents of Southeast Oakland County rank the availability of public transportation, such as buses and trains, as our second most serious issue, according to Emma White Research; and whereas fifty-four percent of Southeast Oakland County residents say that putting in place a regional plan to improve and coordinate public transportation across Southeast Michigan is a top priority, according to Emma White Research; and whereas the Regional Transit Authority of Southeast Michigan is a new organization that was created to coordinate and improve public transportation across the region, including Macomb, Oakland, Washtenaw, and Wayne Counties, including the City of Detroit, and is currently working on a regional transportation master plan; and whereas a Coalition for Transit, or ACT, is a broad-based coalition representing individuals and organizations that recognize the importance of regional transit and the challenges that Southeast Michigan faces due to the current system, and argues that a modern, reliable, regional, public transit system that connects Southeast Michigan's four counties is vital to solving the problem of unreliable regional transit; and whereas a strong regional transit plan will require existing public transportation providers to work together to coordinate schedules and routes and make getting between the city and suburbs more convenient; and whereas more convenient public transportation will improve traffic and make the commute better, even for people who drive, since it will take some of the existing cars off the road, saving everyone both time and money; and whereas better public transportation would support neighborhood development and make it easier to bring conferences and other large events to Detroit and its suburbs; and whereas regional transit must be strengthened and improved to make Southeast Michigan more competitive, which will help local communities attract more businesses, create local jobs, and boost property values. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Berkeley hereby expresses its strong support for a Coalition for Transit, or ACT, and the need for a modern, reliable, regional transportation system that connects Southeast Michigan's four counties. We urge our residents to support ACT and commit to help solve the problem of unreliable public transportation in Southeast Michigan.
Thank you. Very important and timely proclamation indeed. And now I have asked our Mayor Pro Tem, Steve Baker, to read Resolution sixteen sixteen.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is indeed an honor to read this tonight. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Tina Edgar for her service as City Council Member for the City of Berkeley from 2013 to 2016. Whereas Tina Edgar grew up in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. She eventually moved to Boston, Massachusetts, where she started her professional career working at the Christian Science Publishing Society for six years. She moved to New York to study at Parsons School of Design and worked for three years as a manufacturer representative in New York City's Garment District. And whereas Tina Edgar returned to Michigan and became a resident of Berkeley, purchasing her beautiful home in Berkeley's Oxford Manor in 1999. And whereas Tina Edgar completed her Bachelor of Science in Education from Wayne State University and her Master's of Arts from Central Michigan University. She practiced in the education field as a teacher at Lakeview High School in St. Clair Shores, where she taught English at all four levels and Humanities to upperclassmen. She retired after sixteen years of service and now is a member of the Michigan Education Association's Retirement Division. And whereas Tina Edgar served as a member of Berkeley's City Council from 2013 to 2016, being elected to a four-year term in 2013. And whereas Tina Edgar has been active with various boards and commissions, including serving as the council liaison to the Environmental Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and Tree Board. She has worked closely with the Planning Commission on the Robina Project and has shown great support for Berkeley's Public Safety Department. And whereas Tina Edgar volunteers her time working with the Neighborhood Service Organization by giving to the homeless community. She also enjoys traveling, shopping, eating new cuisine, and being active in her spare time. And whereas Tina Edgar has set forth a shining example of what being a council member for the City of Berkeley truly means. She has thoroughly and thoughtfully examined all issues that have been before her, putting all issues into perspective on how they might impact Berkeley residents. She has gracefully articulated her positions on all issues to the council and residents. Ms. Edgar understands the balance that exists between the business, between businesses and residents, and has diligently sought resolutions that were in the best interests of the city. She has been a proud part of the governing board, working with the city's management team and administration, as well as her fellow council members, and is greatly respected by all. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves. Section one. That Tina Edgar be and hereby is recognized for her invaluable civic service to the Berkeley community and City Council, on behalf of all residents, expresses its sincere thanks and appreciation for her years of service to the city and extends all the best wishes for her happiness and success in the future. Introduced and passed at a regular meeting of the City Council on Monday, May 16, 2016, Dr. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And if I may, I had just one other little comment I'd like to, I'd like to offer. Tina, thank you. I've, I've learned so much from you, been inspired by you, and very appreciative for all that you've brought and bring to the community and wherever your adventures may take you. So, uh, so I wrote a little haiku that I'd like to offer for you today, just to, I can quote myself someday. Tina leads from heart and mind. Yes, the river knows. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Tina, I want to thank you for the service that you've given us for this Planning Commission. Every meeting that you sat up here, you always informed the council as to what we were doing and brought forth ideas to our meetings. You engaged all of us at one time or another, and on behalf of the Planning Commission, I want to thank you for your devotion and service to our, to our board. Thank you.
Tina, I would like to thank you from the Public Safety Department, but all of us in the city have enjoyed your leadership and your time here, and I think you've done a wonderful job. We're going to miss you, and again, thank you for coming or being part of our city. Thank you.
Tina, as past president of Oakland Manor. Note that. Oakland Manor subdivision. I want to comment on the fact you always kept your home a star place for the Manor. And you have been wonderful on the council. You're very dedicated, and I'm proud to say you're my friend as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, anybody else on the council would like to, wait, Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Dan isn't here. Dan and Tina and I served on the Road and Water Committee, and the first meeting, Tina learned a lot. She was going to fix all the roads the next day. And then she got into a little more detail and realized, well, it may have to be day after tomorrow because we can't quite do it that fast. But she provided a lot of valuable insight and was really an asset to that committee. So Tina, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Not only are you great in your leadership abilities and have you done a wonderful job on City Council, but you also have a great, great sense of humor. And I just want to mention one little thing that happened when we were at Traverse City at a convention last year. Tina called me over and she says, Eileen, look, look at this river that was floating there. And she says, there are ducks in a row. This is what it means to put your ducks in a row. And the ducks were all going to sleep at night, and they were all lining up in a row. But I'm also very proud to call you my friend, and I hope we keep in touch.
Thank you. Councilmember Gravlin.
First I would say, obviously, this is a very large cheer to fill, as evidenced by everyone's comments this evening. I want to thank you for your help personally in this transition. You've been very insightful and willing to help with everything, and I hope I can continue to pick your brain in the future. And you're, you're right about one thing, it is chilly up here. The temp, the temperature, not the reception.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tina, I was absent when you were sworn in for a few meetings, and when I came back, you turned to me and you welcomed me before the meeting even started. You've always shown compassion, not only for the people up here, but for the people, the residents, for the city. Driving by your home, as Shirley said, is, it's immaculate. It's, you're a true example of what a resident and what a leader in the city should be, and I'm glad I had the honor to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Chief.
Tina, it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you very much.
Very good. I see our state representative down there. I think he wants to say a word.
More than one word, if that's okay.
That's right.
So I have a tribute here that I will, I will give to you. I won't read the whole thing, but I'd like to, it's, it's, read at least the first paragraph and the last paragraph. Let it be known that it is with deep appreciation for the hard work and dedication of Tina Edgar that I honor her today as she brings to a close her tenure in city government as a council member of Berkeley. It is definitely a privilege to recognize a woman who has contributed so much of her time and talent to benefit the Berkeley community. The citizens recognize the loyalty and devotion to public service displayed by this conscientious individual, and I add my sentiments of gratitude for a job well done. And the last paragraph, in special tribute therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to join with the citizens of Berkeley in saluting Tina Edgar in acknowledgement and in gratefulness for her dedicated years in public service as a council member. I offer her my congratulations and best wishes for the future. And I know, obviously, we appreciate your, your service here, but your service started a lot, you know, a long time before as a teacher, and I think that is so important to recognize, sixteen years. I know my mom is a third grade teacher and has been doing it for about twenty-four years, and sometimes teachers go unappreciated, but it's so important. So your service started, I know, a long time ago, and I know all of your former students, thank you. I know all the residents of Berkeley, thank you. And so with that, I would like to present this to you and thank you for your service, and we will miss you, but I know we'll see you.
And we have this one here as well from the council.
I want to thank you for your deep diligence, follow-up.
You're welcome. Thanks for servicing.
For your friendship and all of the thoughtful consideration you put into everything.
Pleasure.
And for your passion. Your articulate expression in every vision that comes before us.
Thank you. Thank you.
You want to sit up?
Thank you.
You're not going to lose me that easily, by the way. I'll be back.
Thank you. Now we move to the second item on the agenda. Ms. Boucher, please read item number two.
Ordinance number oh zero four sixteen, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to rezone property described as Lot 335 of the Larkmore Boulevard subdivision from single-family residential district R1D to parking district P1, set date certain Monday, June 6, 2016.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance oh four sixteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kedekel. Chief.
Yes, we have the city planner, Amy Vanson, here to address the matter.
As you are aware, the city entered into a collaboration agreement with regard to the Eaton properties. There are three lots that are owned by two different property owners, and they were not abutting each other, and so the city attorney for many months has been working with the two property owners to come up with an arrangement where the properties could be divided in a manner that would alleviate a lot of the parking problems that have plagued this area in the last few years, and be able to have the properties developed in a way that makes sense, instead of having a bunch of skinny parking lots that would empty onto a residential street. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing last month with regard to this. You have a copy of my report. With rezonings, the Planning Commission is obligated to make findings regarding the existing uses within the property, the general area of the property in question, the zoning surrounding the property in question, the suitability of the property in question to the use is permitted under the existing zoning, in this case, it's single-family residential, moving to parking, which is what was proposed, the trend of development in the general area, which we all know about, and it is in my report, and the objectives of the current land use plan for the City of Berkeley. The Planning Commission held the public hearing. There were a number of folks that attended the public hearing and expressed concern with regard to the, how the property was going to be developed, what it was going to end up looking like, concern with regard to the amount of parking that is in the area, even though it is all privately owned, and as we've discussed, it is difficult to get property owners to collaborate and allow their parking to be used, even if it seems to make a lot of sense to us from the city's standpoint. So there were concerns about that, how the parking would be developed, how to ensure that the parking was going to be used by self-parkers rather than being signed valet-only and sitting empty and continuing to have self-parkers park up and down the residential streets. These, these items articulated in my report and in the draft minutes, and if you have any questions regarding this, I am available, as is the chairperson of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any questions or aspects of this we need to review? We've been over this ground multiple times, and of course, everybody here saw the Planning Commission open a public meeting on television, and some of the questions that were raised were important questions by the residents. And they are questions that will arise when the site plan is being reviewed by the Planning Commission.
Yes. Yeah, and I think there were concerns with regard to the timing of if the houses are demolished, what's that property going to look like? How long is it going to sit? Is, you know, is it going to be a mud pit, that sort of thing? And so I think with regard to 1010 Eaton and how it was in limbo for too long, certainly that's not something that normally would have been allowed to take place, but administration was faced with a choice of, while we're in the midst of negotiating some sort of collaboration agreement, do you allow a few cars to get off the street, or do you say, no, don't park on it at all? And those were not easy. There was a lot of discussion on administration's end on what's the right thing to do. And unfortunately, I have all kinds of opinions about the right, right thing, but I don't have any power to make it happen, so we're, we're doing the best we can with what we can do.
One of the great things about our democracy is that the government can't make everything happen.
That's true.
Any additional comments from members of council? So everybody is basically saying.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just appreciation for all the work that's gone into this thus far. I realize the, you know, the notion of making omelets and all that kind of stuff comes to mind here, and I think the degree of civility that's been brought through this process has been, has been quite impressive. I agree that the, the work is not yet finished. There certainly is more conversations to come, and I hope that the way of framing the conversation to help ensure the best possible outcomes for everybody can be continued, right? You know, to have that dialogue about saying, all right, what can we do in order to address as many of these issues as possible through the process here? And we look forward to the continued conversation through the site plan process. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who wants to weigh in on this?
Of course, you knew I had to weigh in. My name's Gabrielle Sueda. I live at 1047 Eaton. Sure, you're all familiar with me, my husband and my two-year-old son and myself, who lived there in the first occupied house on Eaton, closest to Vincetta Garage and directly opposite the parking lot. So we're one of the eggs in your omelet. So I'm going to skip over all my repetitive comments and just jump to the conclusion here. I feel it's reckless for the city to rezone just to preserve the collaborative agreement when there's literally no past evidence of compliance from Vincetta and nothing in the agreement that penalizes them if they fail to hold up their end. I know it was a lot of hard work, and I hate to criticize it, but I feel like this is a terrible oversight. So you would be giving them everything and leaving all the consequences to fall on us. So we are relying on you, the elected city council, to represent us as part of this process. So please oppose oh zero four sixteen for now. As Commissioner Pop said at the Planning Commission meeting, past behavior is the best indicator of future behavior. There's no downside to waiting and taking steps to ensure we won't have 1010 times three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sean Sueda. That was my wife. So I guess I'm just here to say that, you know, you know, we're the people who are most impacted by this, and we're not opposed to rezoning in principle or to having more parking. I think we're, you know, taking a reasonable approach here. I think you all are aware that, you know, through the work of Tara Hayes, one of our neighbors in Oxford, that we've proposed a comprehensive plan that we feel would, you know, address parking issues and, in fact, would require rezoning of 1046. So from my perspective, I think the issue here is something, it's, it's much bigger than the single question of whether or not 1046 should be rezoned. It's really more a question of process, and I, I feel just a failure of, of how this process seems me to be unlikely to end up with a good result for the community. Now, just basically, once 1046 is rezoned and the lots are partitioned parallel to Eaton, then homes are no longer viable there. So, I mean, the die is cast. And there's nothing there in the agreement that prevents the homes from being razed before the site plan's approved. And there are also no provisions in the agreement between the city and the property owners regarding any aesthetic requirements for the site plan. So what I ask you is, what happens if, if the Planning Commission is in an impasse with the property owners with regard to the aesthetics of the site plan? What if the owners decide it's not in their financial interest to develop the property in a way that would comply with the Planning Commission's requirements? From my perspective, it seems like rezoning is the main leverage the city has to influence the outcome on Eaton. And that's because both of the property owners want parking. Voluntarily giving away the leverage without any agreement on how the lots would be developed seems to me to be imprudent, especially when you start to consider the numerous compliance issues that you've had with Carbar and the history of the substandard lot at 1010. So again, I'm just, I'm just basically saying, I feel like the process here seems unlikely to lead to a positive outcome, and instead, I'm, I'm afraid what I'm going to end up with are, you know, instead of two vacant homes across the street, just two empty lots, while, you know, more negotiations and other things happen, and they just sit and try to wait you out by making the status quo so unbearable. So I just want to close by saying this. If, if, if you are going to vote yes, I believe you owe it to the community that you serve to at least publicly state what your expectations are for the development of the property, so that, you know, we can feel a little bit more secure in knowing what your vision is, and also so that I don't have to go to a Planning Commission meeting and hear the car owner walk in and say that if he had known that all of these requirements were going to be placed there, that he never would have agreed to any of this in the first place, because I think my head will explode if that happens. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
I may, for the benefit of the council, and perhaps try to address some or all of the questions that were posed about the process. the questions that were posed about the process, let me explain. This may sound cumbersome, but it's one of those, council member Baker referred to as making an omelet. I've heard it referred to as making sausage or whatever. It's not, it's not always pretty, but it can be effective. There is a process that we're required to follow and we're required to follow it under several different state laws, not just in Berkeley, but throughout the state of Michigan. Unfortunately, we cannot merge all of these processes into a, 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 a single meeting or a single decision as would seem to be efficient, but it's just not possible under the law. What we're looking at tonight is a rezoning. It's actually a conditional rezoning and it's being proposed specifically that if this rezoning is, is approved, that it would be to allow the use of 1046 Eaton for off-street parking for Vincetta Garage. So, that is specifically being requested and if approved, that would be the requirement. At the rezoning stage, we are looking at the use of the land, the, how it fits in with, with the city's master plan and proposed master plan, compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods, the various things that are indicated in, where'd Amy go? Amy Vanson's memo where she indicates in, in her memo, some of the standards that we look at. That is all we're doing tonight from a zoning standpoint, is looking at the appropriateness of the existing land use and the proposed land use. When we look at the details of how this parking lot's going to look, what the configuration's going to be, the traffic circulation, the aesthetics, the landscaping, all those sorts of, the particulars, the signage, all those things, those go well beyond the rezoning process. Those are site plan details. That is something that by law and by ordinance, our planning commission is charged with. So, I hate to break the bad news, but there will be more meetings before we get to the point where all those answers are, are nailed down. We do have our planning commission, our group of appointed citizens, which is charged with working with the, it'll be the Vincetta Garage ownership to work through and hopefully come up with the best plan for off-street parking for that site. That's not what the city commission is char, excuse me, the city council is charged with doing tonight. It actually goes well beyond your jurisdiction and authority to do that this evening. For the same reason, those details were not overlooked in the collaboration agreement. The collaboration agreement was never intended to address those details. Rather, what the collaboration agreement was intended to do was to create this means, to create this vehicle for the lots to be reconfigured and recombined to allow the rest of this process, the rezoning and ultimately, the site plan and implementation of the site plan to, to happen. You know, the collaboration agreement had to come first because we had different people, it was privately owned property, different people owned it and that's, and it, it took nearly two years to, to get to that point. At the site plan process is where we will nail down the particulars, button down the particulars of what's going to happen at that site. That typically is a collaborative process in the sense that the, the Vincetta Garage people will have to come forward with a site plan that they think will be satisfactory to the city and to the planning commission. The planning commission and its, the collective wisdom of its members will come up with appropriate conditions, modifications, that's, that sort of thing. And of course, that's after staff has already, you know, run it through the mill and, and, and beat it up and revised it and suggested things as best we can. And ultimately, if a site plan is approved, the owner of the property will be obliged to follow it and to implement it or else they will be in violation of the zoning ordinance, no different than any other development or project in the city. I mean, you, you are required to go through the site plan process and if you have an approved plan, then you need to follow and implement everything that's been approved and any conditions that have been approved. And if you're not willing to do that, then your site plan does not get approved. It gets rejected by the planning commission and you're not permitted to do anything on the property until you do have an approved site plan. So, I'm kind of going on here and explaining that process that'll come down the road, but as you can see, there's, there's several steps to this and as we've been saying now over really a multitude of meetings, this is a small step, we hope, to a, a larger solution. It's not intended to be a complete solution, but a step in the right direction to create a better off-street parking situation for that area and to, to, to really help the city to alleviate some of the on-street parking in the neighborhood as well as to help our, our business community along the Woodward corridor continue to thrive.
Thank you.
Gary Polk, I also live on Eaton Street, slightly further down. I don't really have an issue necessarily with the process of negoti, of, of rezoning. The issue I have is more of the, of the Vincetta Garage owners of enforcement, of their really lacking, seem not to have very much, have any regard for the neighborhood. Are there any provisions before the site plan was, or was approved for the original parking lot? That, that field there was an eyesore. We have stated a couple of times, both at the planning commission and here, that at any time, the owners can raise those two houses. Are there any provisions for them, forcing them to do some sort of basic maintenance even on the property? Because it doesn't seem like they did, as I said, last time before the site plan was approved. And is there any way that that can be, that we can force them to maintain that property?
Okay. John?
To, just to, for Mr. Polk, when you refer to the, maintain the property, you're referring to the 1046 Eaton, the one that's proposed for rezoning tonight? Yes, I mean, they are subject, the, the, the property owners are subject to all the applicable ordinances of the city. I think Ms. Vanson attempted to explain with 1010 Eaton, which I think was referred to. She indicated that, that perhaps ordinance enforcement wasn't as, as, as prompt or as strong, as effective as residents would have liked or, or even if in retrospect, we could have done it over, but that was because...
I thought she indicated that the temporary site plan was, was minimal and, you know, there's, there's no landscaping. That's what I thought she was specifically referring to.
If I may. The site plan that was ultimately implemented was what was approved by the planning commission. What I was referring to was in the interim when it was an unimproved lot and gravel had been put on it and there was some parking that was occurring and we weren't sure what was going to happen with the garage and there was a lot of things in limbo with that. That was where we had a choice of do we allow 10 cars to park there or do we have 10 more cars on Eaton? Those were the choices that we were faced with. With regard to maintenance, all of the properties on Eaton are registered vacant. They have been inspected. They, there is a list of what would need to be done, should the houses be reoccupied. As far as property maintenance go, our code enforcement officer and our building official review those as well as the ones on Oxford on a regular basis to ensure property maintenance compliance.
They can raise those properties tomorrow, can't they?
They can and...
And what happens then?
They would have to keep the law enhumored.
Okay, because last time, there weren't, there weren't any laws. There was just a mud pit.
Again, because that was in the interim. So, if they decided, for whatever reason, they decided, you know what, we're going to do something else, we're going to have only people that fly helicopters and we're going to have a landing pad on the roof or whatever and we don't need the parking, then, and if they happen to demolish the houses, they would have to provide for ground cover of some sort and then they would have to maintain it to a height of eight inches, just like everybody else.
The simple answer to Mr. Polk's question is that they will be required on an ongoing basis to maintain those properties.
Like everyone else?
Correct.
If I may. You said this is a conditional rezoning?
This is a conditional rezoning in the sense that's what's being proposed specifically as, is if the, the proposed rezoning is approved, that the lot will be used exclusively for off-street parking for the Vincetta Garage.
So, if those conditions aren't met, does it revert to residential or, and it starts all over?
That is correct.
Okay.
Very good. Any additional discussion from the councilor Kadeco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everyone involved, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Attorney, the two entities, the residents who have spoken. I think it's important that we hear everyone's concerns and as the attorney mentioned, this has been over two years and we finally got these two entities to come to an agreement that, you know, nothing's going to be perfect. However, I see less parking on Eaton by your homes. I see more in the parking lot when this happens, if it happens. I, I just think that unfortunately, we can't have it both ways. We can't have no parking on the street and then nowhere else to park. So, there's got to be somewhere or something for these people to, to park. I believe that Vincetta and Lugo, I think they will, Carbar and Lugo, whomever, I think that they will follow through, especially from what I've heard about the negotiations and the meetings that have been taking place. I believe they will follow through. Everybody wants to be part of Berkeley and part of the neighborhood and I think that having these two entities finally come to an agreement after all this time is, is, is probably one of the best things that's happened since I've been sitting up here. And I see nothing but positive results from this happening if it does. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Very good. Did you want to say something? Because I saw you making a, a quick move there and you're welcome.
Well, with all due respect, councilman, councilmember Kadeco, I mean, it's a straw man argument to say that you can't have both. I mean, I didn't come up here and, and say that, you know, I want the parking problem fixed and I don't want any parking lots. It's a, that, that's not the argument. The point I was trying to make was two things. The first one was, is that rezoning first, you lose all of your leverage to influence the result later. I mean, I don't, if, if you're having trouble with, with 1010, keeping it from being a mud pit in the past, you know, that's an indication of a lack of leverage and, and it just seems like going forward, continuing with this process of rezoning first and then hoping for the best later, that you end up in, again, in a situation where you don't have any leverage to influence the outcome. So, that, that's, that's the primary concern. I already admit that we need, you know, to have parking lots there. The question is, how do we get to a good result? My concern is this process doesn't get us to a good result. And then the only other thing I was going to say about that, that doesn't seem, again, to be addressed, is that what happens if the property owners walk away? They, it gets rezoned, it gets split, right? So, that the, the, that homes on these lots are no longer viable because they've been split parallel to the, to the side street. And then, you know, because everyone feels like they're all, we're all going to come together and negotiate and get a good result out of the planning commission, but they just walk away because they don't want to make the financial commitment or lose the parking spaces that would be necessary to make something aesthetically pleasing. They've razed the homes and we have empty lots. And, and if you, and if you think about what, what Amy Vanson just said about, you know, about the previous situation, about having to make a, a, a decision about a bad or a worse, I mean, it disappears to be the, the negotiating tactics of the people that you're dealing with, which is to make this, the status quo situation bad enough so that the alternative, which is what they want, is what you eventually choose. And that's fundamentally what my concern is. And I understand everything that you said and I appreciate all of the work that you put into it. I'm just fundamentally saying that the main piece of leverage that appears to be the city has is this rezoning and by giving it away first, it's putting itself in a position, once again, to be like in the previous ones where there was very little that they could do once the property owners became uncooperative. So, thank you for allowing me additional time.
Thank you. Thank you. The, the issue, Sean, that you have actually is with state law that requires rezoning to come first. So, it's not a question of giving away leverage. It's a requirement of the process and the law. So, that's simply what we're doing. That's as I understood the attorney's explanation. So, what happens at the end of the line is it comes back to the planning commission and the planning commission will then set the requirements. If the property owner does not comply, then they're in violation, like any of the rest of us are in violation and...
That's correct. Or is Ms. Gravlin asked, if they fail to move forward with a site plan to actually implement, to construct a proper parking lot that is approved by the city, then the property, the zoning can change back to residential. So, so really, we don't lose our leverage. I mean, we ultimately...
But don't you partition the property? You can? Okay. It just, it seemed to me like that was sort of the rub, because you keep talking about it's private property and you can't force people...
Well, the property, I mean, it's privately owned property and property owners can, I mean, with or without the collaboration agreement, the two property owners could have gotten together and reconfigured those lots. They've always had that right. They just needed help getting there. But that, that, and that makes sense for them to keep it that way with or without parking lots, but it was really necessary to have that reconfiguration in order to create a viable off-street parking lot situation. But the rezoning, the, the power to zone will continue to reside with the, with the Berkeley City Council and they do, they're not abdicating or giving up or, or losing that authority. They will always have that and if, if, if having off-street parking at that location turns out not to be a good use for the property or the use isn't implemented, I suspect we will be revisiting this again at the time that that realization is reached.
Very good. Okay, final question?
In the collaboration agreement, it specifically says that they, Vincetta, shall as soon as possible bring forward their site plan. It's one of the clauses in there with no actual timeframe from the negotiations. Do you have a sense of what as soon as possible meant to you?
I think they would like to have that parking lot there already.
Yeah.
As soon as possible will definitely be after...
We passed this.
The rezoning is through. This is first reading, then there would be a, a, a second reading and it will be sometime after that. But they've made it very, very clear that they are eager to move forward with, with getting the parking. They recognize that it's in their, in their business interest to get that done and to get more parking for their customers and to get the city off their back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Unless there's any burning other issue, are we ready to vote? Seems like we're ready to vote. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the rezoning of 1046, which is ordinance O-416?
Kadeco?
Yes.
Stenman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M-2916, matter of considering a special event permit request along the ancient order of Hibernian, I'm sorry, Hibernians in America, conduct a County of Oakland Irish Fest on Saturday, September 10th, 2016, from 12 noon to 8 p.m. The nonprofit has requests that 12 Mile... The nonprofit has requests that 12 Mile Road between Wakefield Road and Tyler be closed for the event. Approval is contingent upon the city's receipt of all required documents before the event date.
Is there a motion to approve M-2916?
Move to approve.
Support.
Approved by Councilmember Kadakel, with support by Mayor Protam Baker. Chief Eschman?
Yes, Mayor. To address this matter, we have Deputy Chief Mike Crum, and we have Mr. Steve Zanetti from the Order of, Ancient Order of Hibernians. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Very well.
Standing next to me, Mr. Zanetti, is the President of the Ancient Order of Hibernians. He has requested that they have the County Oakland Irish Fest here on 12 Mile, and they requested for Saturday, September 10th, as we heard earlier. They have collected the required signatures that we asked for from the city here in that block. They are working on the tax exempt status for me, and then we do have a letter connected with your packets about their insurance, and why they, why would they like to wait till August to have that. Mr. Zanetti here indicated the goal is to hold a family-friendly event celebrating Irish culture through music, dance, and food while bringing people from all over Metro Detroit to downtown Berkeley. And the public safety will have extra staffing. We do recommend this approval, contingent on the required paperwork, making it to the city clerk, and then final by the city manager. And then I have Mr. Zanetti here, if he has any questions or anything he wants to add in here, so.
Let me just say that we've held the Royal Oak St. Patrick's Parade. I'm the one that started it about 16 years ago. We've had no issues with the city whatsoever with this. We do not allow drinking on the streets. It's a family party, basically. If they want to drink, they can go in the bars and all that. But we will have people staffed down the street to make sure nobody's walking around with open containers. That's our job, too. And we'll have a kid's zone, and we have a tea room gonna be set up out there, and food. We encourage all, every business I went to, I talked with them, and they're all receptive to be involved with it, putting things out on the sidewalk, somehow putting some kind of promotion together. We're gonna be doing like a Ferrydores scavenger hunt throughout the city, so people have to walk into the buildings and look at your businesses. We probably expect around 5,000 people to attend the first day, you know, the first event. We named it County Oakland. They've never had an Irish Fest in Oakland County. It's always been in, as Phil knows, it's always been on the west side. I guess this side of Telegraph doesn't work, so we decided, we're tired of driving over there, we want to have our own here. And I love the city here. I mean, I'm like, I used to own a business here, years and years and years ago, and I've always come to Berkeley, and I like it here. It's a nice community, and everybody's been really easy to work with. Roseanne, and the police, everybody's been real friendly. So, you know, we're gonna bring it. You will not have an issue for it. And we've already got the entertainment, we've got the dancers, we've got the pipers, we have the bands, we have all the Your Irish bars around here to participate in it. If there's any questions, you know, you can contact me personally, since I'm semi-retired besides babysitting. So, if there are any questions, I can answer them for you.
Any questions from Mrs. Zanetti? Councilmember Barstedman?
Okay, you're gonna be open, actually, from 12 until 8?
12 to 8.
Will there be some setup and dismantling required so that 12 Mile would have to be closed a little bit longer than that?
The only thing we'll have is the stage from Southfield and the, and the police barricades. There's really nothing else, and the Porta-Johns will be probably picked up the next morning.
Where's the stage gonna be located at?
It's gonna be right by, was it Wakefield?
Wakefield, right.
Right in front of the MRK.
Right. Councilmember Blanchard?
If I may, Your Honor. This is not necessarily a question for you, but I have reviewed all the plans, and it looks to me like it would be a 10 o'clock in the morning shutdown to at least 9 o'clock at night. And that's why I direct the question to Derek. Derek, how long does it take to put the barricades up to shut this down and open it back up again?
We would set stuff up beforehand, and then the day of the event, you know, an hour before, or something like that is...
Okay, so we could actually say maybe 11?
We can mimic a lot of the plans that we work out with the other events, so I don't view this as much different at all.
Okay, any estimate from you or from Mike on additional overtime cost?
We've calculated, at least from our end...
DPW is estimating approximately $3,000 worth of effort for this event, which is similar to the other events that we have, where we have a full closure.
Okay. Discuss this with the director, and it looks like we'll have two officers down there for the day. Two officers on scene if we have that size crowd, so our cost would be just the officers. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protam Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two quick questions. First, on the, the timing for the additional paperwork. Do we have an anticipated schedule for when that materials will arrive, so we have proper time to, to review it and all that stuff? Any indication of approximately?
From the insurance, I can say from the insurance.
Please.
I spoke to the, to their carrier, and he's indicated that around August, he would like to write the policy. So about a month before, 30 days before, is what he's indicated to me, and then he'll get it to us at that time, so.
Thank you for that, and that's, that seems normal or standard for these kinds of things. So the fact, if anything, that you're here ahead of that is to your credit, to get ahead of the game and give us ample time to make these necessary preparations. So I appreciate that. My second question has to do with a little bit about your organization. If you could share with us, by its name, the ancient order there, I imagine it's been around a little while? Can you, can you share?
Well, in America, we just celebrated 188 years. Our, our division in Oakland County's been around for 60 years, and the Hibernians actually came from around 1600 in Ireland. Their main job was to protect the clergy from being slaughtered, basically. So, and they came to America, and their job was to find jobs and assimilate the Irish into their community. That's where you come with Patty Wagon and everything, so.
Nice.
But we've been around for a long time. We've done this, and it's, it's not our first go-around on these, but we want to bring the festival this side of Telegraph, finally, so.
Great, thank you.
And I see Roseanne is here. Tell us the role of the chamber in all of this.
Well, actually, just briefly. The chamber is very much in support of bringing another big event downtown Berkeley. We, our businesses, our chamber businesses who are in that area, have been constantly asking, when can we have another event like Art Bash that we'll bring? You know, Art Bash brings about 10,000 people down on a day. So they want more walking traffic, they want an event that will bring not only people within the Berkeley community, but those outside. And when they approached us of this idea, we thought there is a solid group that has a good reputation of putting on a very clean, fun, family-friendly event, so we are in full support. I've given him some guidance, the chamber's given him some guidance on how to go about, how we handle our stuff with Art Bash, and we're just here to really encourage support of this event. Thank you.
Thanks, Roseanne. And then, Councilmember Blanchard?
Just another comment, Your Honor. From the emergency planning side of the House, we have already completed the first draft of the event planning documents, and we're running those around with the different people to get their impact and trying to find out what, what else we need to add to it, so it's coming along very well.
Very good. I know that your management of the Royal Oak Parade has been superb all those years, so you have plenty of practice at putting on big events.
We started with about 13 people walking down the street, and now we're up to about 900 marchers, so.
Yeah.
As sure, I think we had around 10, about 10,000 people watching the parade, so. Actually, we were bigger than the holiday parade.
But at Royal Oak, it's just a parade? It's not an all-day event like this?
Well, we, we encourage after the parade that everybody go into the restaurants and, and celebrate there. We don't, we walk the streets and all that. We don't allow any of the alcohol in the parking lots or anything. As, you know, in the Detroit Parade, they were starting to crack down on it, finally, so. And bring it back, you know. We're trying to make, we're trying to make it so easy for families. We encourage people walking. We want them to go in the stores. That's our job, you know, so. And if I may, that, we're not asking any money to see the bands. The bands are pretty much, are gonna be taking care of themselves. Everybody's donating their time. But the American Legion is gonna, you know, party with us to collect hats, scarves, backpacks, and they're gonna distribute them to the vets, families that are in need. So we ask people to drop off that, so that's, that's our goal. That's it, no money.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Well, they haven't voted yet, Steve.
I'm gonna sit down and be happy.
Thank you, sir. Iron flag here.
Mayor gets a special one for temporary...
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce as well for your support of this event. Ms. Boucher, are you ready to please call the roll on M-2916?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing to receive written and verbal comments regarding the pre-programming of community development block grant CBGG money.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion of the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Chief Eschman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we will start with the city planner, Ms. Vanson.
Good evening again. We have $28,469 from the 2014 program year, and we get a certain amount of money every year. This was originally programmed, as I articulate in my report, one thing, and then it became something else, and we still have $28,469. And Oakland County, which is, we're a subrecipient, we would not be entitled to housing and urban development money directly because the city's too small, so we have an agreement with Oakland County to get some of that money. Oakland County is very anxious to get this money off the books because Zen Hud doesn't like to see it on the books. They want to see the money spent and used. So I polled various department heads on projects, and our library director would like to have the automatic door openers for the men's and women's restrooms at the library. He's been wanting to do that for a couple of years. He has received some quotes, because I had asked him, well, are we doing just half of it? Because I don't, really don't want to come back, not that I'm seeing you guys, but, you know, we'd like to just get it all done at once and get the money spent. His quotes are actually coming in around $18,000 for the mechanization of that, to install it. So I said, well, let's, let's do all of it, and if we end up coming back to you for $10,000 to be reprogrammed for sidewalk ramps or something like that, we'll do it at that point. But anyway, that's what the library director would like to do. You all have to okay it, and then I send paperwork to Oakland County, and they okay it, and then we can get it contractually obligated and get the project done.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody from the public would like to weigh in on this item? Well, then, seeing no one coming to the microphone, we will close the public hearing. And Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M-3016, matter of directing the city planner to prepare a reprogramming request for 2014 community development block grant funds in an amount of $28,469 to provide for the installation of automatic door openers in the men's and women's restrooms at the library.
Is there a motion to approve M-3016?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravlin. Chief?
Yes, now that we've completed the public hearing on this matter, it's up to you to consider and...
So we're back now to discuss the expenditure or disbursement of this money, specifically the $18,000 to the library. Any discussion on that item?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for clarification, of the $28,000, if we use $18,000, the other $10,649 goes back and can be reprogrammed to other things in the CBGG program?
Yes, and I would have to come back before you.
Right. We enjoy seeing you, so.
It's always nice to be seen.
So, are there any questions for our planning director? Very good. So it seems like then we're ready to vote on this item. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-3016?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M-3116, matter of approving the purchase of Census radio water meter equipment for commercial accounts at a total cost of $54,660 from the sole source vendor, Etna Supply Company of Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-3116?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, by Mayor Protam Baker, support by Councilmember Kadakel. Chief Eschman?
Yes, for this matter, we have the Department of Public Works Director, Daryl Schuler.
Good evening. We're always looking for ways to do things more efficiently at DPW, and this is one of those. Per our capital equipment replacement plan and the current budget, we had set aside some funds to do conversions of our commercial water customers, basically converting them to radio reads instead of, I guess what I'll call, a manual radio read. So essentially, right now, for us, when we do meter reading, we walk up to each house or each business with a touchpad, and we actually touch it to the side of the house to pick up the reading. There's no writing of anything down that, that's transmitted electronically. That's how we read meters now, and there is a movement to go to AMR and AMI technologies, basically automatic technologies for reading, a lot like what Detroit Edison and others have already used. And so this is our sort of movement in that direction. So we would like to start with our commercial base, which is approximately 400 customers. We've got about 6,400 residential, just to put that in a little bit of perspective. So we'd like to start with our commercial customers first, and then, in the future, look at the viability of a residential conversion. This will give us an opportunity to essentially do a pilot program for this, but, so that the new technology will allow us to basically drive through the commercial zones, non-residential zones, and the readings will come in to the vehicle automatically. We will have to purchase a GPS unit for this, but essentially, those, through radio frequencies, are transmitted to our current radio reading devices, our current devices. So all that we have to do, it's quite simple, is on the, on the outside of the business, is just literally attach a box to the current touchpad that just snaps right on. It's very easy to do, and then that device will then transmit to us in the vehicle to pick up the readings. So it will make, you know, us much more efficient from picking up those readings. We'd be able to go through and do readings more frequently if we wanted to. It gives us a lot more options for the future. So this pilot program, I think, will, there will be other benefits to this as well, as we look forward to, you know, getting in line with some of the newer technologies. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's no power requirement for this radio transmitter that you have to hook up, or just snaps on to which you got there now?
Good question. There is, there's juice that's needed, and that's handled via a battery that's inside the unit. And Census, who is our meter manufacturer, so every community has to pick a meter manufacturer. There are a handful of them on the market, a dozen or so, but you pick one, basically, and then you have one meter. For logical reasons, you wouldn't want to have multiple different types of meters and different meter reading devices, so we have one, it's Census, and they have a, what I understand to be the industry standard for warranties. They've got a 10-year warranty on these units, so there's a battery in this device, in this box that we snap on, 10-year full replacement, and then an additional 10 years after that, prorated based on how old it is, which, as I understand, is the industry standard when it comes to warranties. So the battery is the component for the power, Jack, and that's what will power this. Very similar to what we see in a lot of the radio reading devices, 15, 20 years, you know, that's the numbers that they typically talk.
Very good. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Schuler. You're right, you do try to do things more efficiently all the time. How much more accurate, or will be about the same, as the old unit that we're using now?
Good question. Yeah, the accuracy, I don't view as really any different. It's, you know, it's really the same principle. It's how we get from there to there. So instead of walking through the yards and flower beds and into the snow and other things that they have to go through to find those touchpads, they'll just be able to drive down the street and get the same information. Now, what that allows us to do, though, is we're going to be able to do that much quicker than we did before, obviously, and give us more flexibility to potentially do readings more often, not just for billing purposes, but for other reasons, too. I mean, we can detect leaks more quickly with this, you know, there's, the possibilities are endless here. So we're just scratching the surface with this pilot program with commercial.
And one more. The, nothing is perfect. If there were a failure in the system, is there a backup plan, or do we go back to the way we were doing it?
And we can always, we will always be able to do what we did before. You know, this does not, you know, we can always just pull that box off and handle the, the manual read of the reader. So that doesn't change at all. It's simply adding another device to the one that's currently there.
Are more and more cities going to this?
Absolutely. Birmingham, for instance, just went to, I guess, the cream of the crop when it comes to this, which is, you know, basically, they can just, using radio transmitters, sit in the office and literally tell someone what is happening at their meter location. So they could identify leaks in the system instantaneously. For us, we're only able to identify those, obviously, when we take a reading. Otherwise, we can't, we don't have the data to say you might have a problem. So they have that technology. They're a Census customer as well. So I've been following them very closely as they move through that process. They went through and just changed everything in a one full swoop, you know, and spend, spent quite a bit of money doing so. But they're a good test case for us as we look forward as well, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Gravlin.
Just curious, how long would we want to pilot this with the commercial before we look to move?
You know, I would like a solid year of, of getting the information. So, you know, I still think we're, you know, a year or two away from really looking at residential seriously for this. I would really like to get a good year's worth of data on this to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. And as we all know, technology can change very rapidly as well, and different ways of doing it could become even more efficient. And so we need to keep abreast of those as well. But I think this will give us a good understanding, going from where we're at now to the future, and let us tackle that slowly and work out all the bugs.
Very good.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for bringing this before us as well. I think these are great questions and comments on the approach and the value and things like that, and, and the potential for the future that this offers to us. As you mentioned, not only having greater, a speed with which these readings can be brought in, but then opening up more flexibilities for different kind of rate structures and tariffs based on the, you know, the frequency of the read, and you can give them better information on that. To Councilmember Blanchard's question, the notion of getting the, the data through the radio signal is, is a, is an excellent step forward. The AMR approach makes a lot of sense. There are utilities out there that can partner with local municipalities to hop onto their, their feed network to kind of provide that backhaul infrastructure, so that municipalities wouldn't need to invest in a lot of those types of things. And that's not what we're proposing tonight, but these are the kinds of things that broader partnerships could offer down the road. So I think it's, it's a, it's a great step forward. I think it's, it's wise to go a full annual cycle through this process, so that everyone's comfortable with it, both the customers as well as our, our staff, in doing the right thing, and then seeing where it goes from there. So I look forward to, to the progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Derek. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-3116?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadecal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M-3216, matter of approving the rental of a catch basin cleaning machine from Jack Dohany companies at a cost not to exceed $18,700 in accordance with the mitten public bid held on May 6, 2016.
Is there a motion to approve M-3216?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Kadecal. Chief Eshman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, Derek will address this issue.
Thank you. Before you tonight is another piece of the Saw Grant puzzle that we've been working so hard on, and we're getting closer and closer to the finish line here. So we've been putting in as much time as possible to gather as much data before we have to draw that line in the sand and then complete a report that will give us the roadmap for the future. So tonight, before you, is a catch basin cleaning rental, a machine, that we'd like to rent as a part of the Saw Grant. So this is 90% reimbursable expense through the Saw Grant. Just to reset quickly for you, we are going through all the mainline sewers with our staff and our vector and our camera, videoing, rating all of the, the public sewers for this report, and really trying to get through everything. Our report only had us going through 25% of the system and drawing conclusions from that 25%, but I think we're already much higher than that, and, and we're probably not going to get through everything. I do suspect we'll be through the majority of the city by the time that that report is needed. So again, they've got to draw a line in the sand and gather the data before moving towards the report. So our guys are going forward and doing the mainline, the main combined sewer inventorying, which is the most important piece. But we'd also like to do catch basin inventorying. So we've done manholes. We're doing the mainline. And the other piece of this is the catch basins or the inlets in the streets. What are the conditions of those structures? What do they look like? That is all part of the Saw Grant as well. So we would like to rent a machine for what we're guessing to be two months that would go out with our staff to then go through the 1,800 or so catch basins in the city and basically rate them all and have that included as part of our report, as part of the Saw Grant. I want to be clear that the data that we're going to get from the catch basin work will not be in the final report per se, because, again, that line in the sand that we have to draw is coming up very quickly. But it's still Saw Grant eligible expense, and it's still a good expense. It's still something that we can draw conclusions from and, and look to improve our system, so we still want to move forward with it. But we want to keep the vector, our machine that we currently have, on the mainlines, and in order to do the catch basins at the same time, I need another piece of equipment. I initially intended to rent something from one of our, our neighboring communities. We took, we found a trailer machine that we brought over, and, and we took it out in the field and spent a couple hours with it, and at the end of the day, it wasn't the right machine for what we were looking for. It was actually a hydro excavation machine, which is a different type of thing, even though same principles applied, vacuuming and so forth. It wasn't going to allow us to do what we needed to do. So we thanked them, provided the machine back, and then I had to go ahead and put out a bid for some type of rental. And we received two bids with multiple, multitude of options. We selected the lowest priced option, which is another vector type of a unit that we would like to rent for, again, I'm speculating about two months. That will allow us to get through those 1,800 catch basins with our own staff doing the work, and that's, their labor and equipment is 90% grant eligible. So we will be making requests for this rental, as well as for that labor, through the Saw Grant. And it's all covered under that overall project umbrella, the overall project cost.
This maximizes the Saw Grant value?
That's right. Well said.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional questions on this item? Mayor Protem Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for that detailed explanation. We were curious in, about the motivation behind this, the brief rental, and that certainly makes sense. It seems like we'll be parallel pathing or multitasking to cover as much as we can within the window allotted for by the grant to leverage the 90% return that we anticipate. So that's, that is, that's good, good use of the funds here to help ensure that, that we can cover as much ground as we can, give the, the team some good experience with, with a cool, you know, piece of equipment, and, and get us some really insightful data as, as a result. So I think that's, that's good, that's good work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-3216?
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadecal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight?
Resolution number R-1816, matter of approving wage and benefit changes to full, part-time, and seasonal staff.
Is there a motion to approve R-1816?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadecal.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Chief Eshman?
Yes, Your Honor, we have finalized our recommendation for wage and benefit packages for the mentioned employees. Finance Director, Mr. Sabuda, will present.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. What you have before you this evening is a three-year economic package. You have wages and fringes for full-timers, and then wages for part-timers. And then also, in order to remain competitive in the market and to keep outstanding seasonal employees, we also have a package for seasonal employees. This goes from 5/16 of 2016 through 6/30 2018, and we're estimating that it would be a three-year cost of approximately $122,000 over the three-year period. Be happy to answer any and all questions that the council may have regarding the package.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Very good. This has been an effort to keep everything in balance with our employees, so that nobody gets the short end of the stick. And I think it's very wise expenditure. If there's no discussion, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-1816?
Kadecal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing to consider the proposed 2016-17 annual operating budget and supporting tax rates for the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve opening the public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravlin.
There is the public.
There is the public. We have opened a public meeting on the 2016-17 budget, and there is not a crush of people coming to the microphone for obvious reasons. So it appears it would be appropriate now to close the public hearing. So, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10?
Resolution number R-1916, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the 2016-17 through 2022-23 capital improvements plan of the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-1916?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadecal, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Chief Eshman?
Mr. Mayor, of course, this matter will be presented by the Finance Director, Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. What you have before you this evening is the state required 2016-17 through 2022-23 capital improvements plan of the city of Berkeley. This is the eighth year that we, we have done this. We were before the Planning Commission back in late April. We went through the plan, line by line, basically, and the Commission looked at it, basically approved it, and is recommending approval of the council. This year, it is a $44.5 million plan, spread over seven years. We are recommending in this year's budget $2.4 million worth of capital improvement expenses. Last year, to give you a sense of what was going on, last year, we had a $34 million plan, and we had appropriated, the council had appropriated $1.3 million in, in current year expenses. So the plan is up about $10.5 million. We're going to spend, or we're going to appropriate for $1.1 million more, and the plan carries us out to 2022-23. Be happy to answer any questions, Your Honor.
I know we've been over this with a fine-tooth comb, and I know my colleagues are probably weary of looking at these narrow lines. But is there anything, Councilmember Blanchard?
Just to comment, Your Honor, for the people at home, we say that we've got $44 million out here. That may or may not all get spent. The situation changed over the seven-year period. Things come on and things drop off, so it's not a hard, fast rule that we're going to support, spend $44 million on this over the next seven years. It's guidance, and as the things move through the, through the years, each year, they move closer, and they're refined, and the costs get better until the current budget year, when they may or may not be adopted into the plan. So I just want to make sure the people watching at home understood a little bit of Buckland rationale. Did I get that right?
You were perfect, Your Honor. You were perfect.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Yes, just to amplify that exact same point, that this, unlike some of the subsequent items on the agenda before us, is multi-year by its very nature, and it is, projects a vision of the kinds of things that we will be doing as a community, the ways in which we'll be investing in our infrastructure and the, the necessary equipment to, to maintain that infrastructure. And as my colleague mentioned, it is a, it is a plan that rolls over time. So as we approach each of the annual cycles to, to actually commit to some of the funding, this serves as a guidance for us as we, as we get a chance to see where it is we're going and, and what it is that we need to respond to. So what I really appreciate about this part of the, of the process is the degree to which we can cast that net far out into the future to anticipate the kinds of things that we'll need to do, the types of conversations we'll need to have, the additional research that we'll need to conduct, and the ways in which, together, we can thoughtfully engage in the, the annual process, having this longer-range vision. So I celebrate this part of the process as well, and look forward to, to seeing these and subsequent opportunities unfold for us. Thank you.
Thank you. As we talk about this very item, one of our fire trucks is pulling out. We can hear the, the siren out there. A fire truck costs about $1 million, give or take. We can't have the chief walk in one day and say, "I need a new fire truck tomorrow." We have to be planning for that for several years, and this is an example of how we plan those major purchases. And it requires a lot of thought from our department heads and our employees, and careful planning from our finance department, so that when the day comes that we have to have that fire truck, we are situated nicely to make that purchase. It's good planning. It's good business, and I thank everyone along the line for, for all you do and the thought that's put into making this work very well for us. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1916?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadecal?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11?
Resolution number R-2016, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, establishing a residential and commercial service fee for the collection and disposal of solid waste, effective July 1, 2016.
Is there a motion to approve R-2016?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravlin. Chief Eshman?
Yes, again, Mr. Mayor, we will have the Finance Director address this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. Again, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. What you have here is an annual resolution that deals with the collection and disposal of solid waste. We're specifically dealing with the charge that is on the water bill. What you have before you this evening is a, a slight rate increase proposed. In 1516, the charge was $7.55 per quarter. We're asking to go to $8.75 per quarter, or going from $30.20 per year to $35 per year, which is a $4.80 increase. This pays, this increase pays for capital costs incurred at SACRA for the development of a single-stream recycle system that is in the development works, and it will be put forward into the near future. Also know that this resolution deals with commercial rates. So if you're a commercial customer coming through the city renting a dumpster, a two, a two cubic yard, four cubic yards, six cubic yard, eight cubic yard dumpster, those rates are, are proposed to be increased also, approximately 16%. The rate increase will generate approximately $34,700. The balance of the fees collected, the 755, will continue to go for rubbish disposal, brush pickup, and those other solid waste services that the citizens of Berkeley enjoy. With that, I would answer any and all questions that the council may have.
Okay. Any question for our finance department? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think for the residents at home, they need to know that this additional money is going to reconfigure SACRA for the single-stream recycling, which means we will now, in the future, have one recycling bin for everything, and it will be sorted at SACRA. And there is a cost for that, and we must prepare in advance because it's coming, and we want to be ready for it. And it's, it's something that the recycling people want, SACRA wants, and it will be easier on our residents to just put everything in one container and not have to sort it, so. And hopefully, we will be able to boost our recycling rate. We are currently at about 15%. Would like to see a little higher than that.
Your Honor, also one other item that I failed to mention earlier. The last, the rate, this rate has never been raised. This is the rate that first came in when it was set up back in 2002, 2003, and hasn't been raised since then. So this is the first time since '02, '03 that this rate has, has even been looked at. So I wanted to mention that also.
We're a member city of SACRA.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
We're a member of SACRA.
Correct. That is correct.
As a city. Very good. Anything else to be said on this item? Very good. I think this is an improvement. This is a good investment, actually, long-term. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-2016?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadecal?
Yes.
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, please read item number 12.
Resolution number R 2116, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the charges for water and sewer services, effective July 1, 2016.
Is there a motion to approve R 2116?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Cadecle?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Chief Ashman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, the Finance Director will address this issue.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. What you have before you is the annual resolution setting charges for water and sewer rates, effective July 1, 2016. Well...
Sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Yeah, we gotta go.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, continue.
I thought it was.
Okay.
For the folks at home, the chief and Councilmember Blanchard has to leave because they have fire duty. So, good luck and be safe.
Look, Jack, be safe. Yes. Thank you.
And so, the Finance Director will continue.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, what you have before you this evening is the annual resolution regarding water and sewer rates for the fiscal year starting July 1, 2016. We're proposing a 2.26% rate increase. Basically, what we're looking at here is on a, on a, on a average customer, $28.88 annually. So, approximately $7 per quarter increase, or $28.88 annually on an average customer here in Berkeley. So, that's what the 2.26% increase looks like. Please know that water has increased wholesale 2%. Sanitary has gone up 9.9%. And sanitation, I'm sorry, stormwater has gone up wholesale 1.6%. So, when you factor all these wholesale rate increases coming in, besides the fact that we have to maintain our current system, and know that we have 50 miles of water line and 50 miles of sewer line to maintain, a 2.26% investment into the, into the system is a, is a very solid investment for us. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions for our Finance Director? Mayor Protem?
Thank you again, and as was mentioned with the other items, also had been thoroughly studied in meticulous detail. And if my colleague were still here, I'm sure one of the things he'd like to point out is the relative positioning of our water rates to those neighboring communities, and not to, not to steal his thunder, so to speak, but channeling the kind of material that he personally puts together to help demonstrate the care with which he and we all seek to ensure that our water rates are as low as is absolutely possible. The information here is a list of 10 communities in the SACRA area that, to which we consider a peer group, and their, their water rates. And so, it ranks from the most expensive to the least expensive. And this data is based on the current or existing year's rates, not the new ones that other communities may be addressing in their, their process, just as we are tonight with ours. And so, we currently rank ninth out of 10, as in the second lowest water rates in the, in the compared, in the peer set here. And, and after these proposed changes, again, with much scrutiny to ensure that every penny is appropriate, we will remain ninth in the list. And so, and that's without any of the others even going through a process and considering adjustments of their own. So, for those of us that, that want to know that not only is every line of these materials being reviewed carefully, but also the fact that we are getting considerable value for the, for the money that we put into the system, and the care that we, we put into maintaining the system so that we can retain these low water rates. So, we were at number nine last year, and we will remain the second lowest water rate system in our peer set, thanks to, again, the fortitude and dedication of the team and the meticulous attention to detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. If there aren't any additional questions for our Finance Director, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 2116?
Gravlin?
Yes.
Cadecle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 13?
Resolution number R 2216, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017.
Is there a motion to approve R 2216?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Baker with support by Councilmember Cadecle. Ms. Deputy City Manager?
Why don't we just continue the David Show?
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Assistant Manager. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council members. What you have before you this evening is the fiscal year beginning July 1, 16 through June 30, 2017, operating budget. As you know, we start in mid-December, early January, putting this document together, starting with the, with the departments, filling their requests, and delivering those requests to the Finance Department. From that step, we work with the city manager and the department heads to come up with a spending plan for council consideration. That process ends usually end of March. Then, we put the budget together for council consideration by the end of April. The council receives the budget in May, by May 1, in accordance with city charter. And with that, council then looks at it, deliberates over the budget in open study sessions, which were held on May 9 and May 10 of this year. And then, that process then culminates into this evening with a public hearing, and then the, the going over of all the resolutions that affect the, the operating budget. So, this is your, this is your document, this is what, this is the spending plan for the upcoming year. Please know that there are 18 operating funds, the largest being the General Fund, spending over $10 million, almost $11 million. The second largest being the Water Sewer Fund, and the third largest being the Public Safety Pension System. The total spending plan for the upcoming fiscal year is $25.9 million across all operating funds. That is 8% increase. This includes the CIP plan of 2.4 million that was presented earlier this evening, the Capital Equipment and Replacement Plan, again, very similar to the Capital Improvement Plan, but the Capital Equipment Plan is, again, a plan, but we are appropriating $1.2 million across all operating funds for the purchase of equipment. This will support eight departments, providing service across the city, 66 full-time employees, and almost, almost 100 full-time equivalent when you factor in the part-timers and the seasonal people. The revenue side of the equation, $24.7 million. The difference between the spending and the revenues, $1.2 million, will be derived from the fund balance, as, from the various operating funds, as we discussed earlier in study session and in various other sessions with the manager and Assistant City Manager and the department heads. We will be rolling back tax rates in accordance with the Headley Amendment. Again, this year, you will not see, you'll see a reduction in tax rate because two of the three debt issues that were levied are now gone. So, we're looking at almost, just under 16 mils, where last year, we were at 16 and a half, almost 17 mils. So, a little bit of a reduction there. Please know, however, that the pre-Headley debt, the tax rates associated with that, have gone up. So, it's, in one case, you've, you've lost some debt, in another case, some debt has risen. So, as you, as you mesh all that together, you're looking at almost a $16 per thousand tax value. The Downtown Development Authority is also in here, and, again, they, their tax rate is affected by Headley but won't roll back because of the way the tax values fell this year. They didn't grow as largely as across the city, as, as they did across the city, and thus, their rate will stay the same. And, again, that rate is only in the DDA area. With that, Mr. Mayor, I would be happy to answer any and all questions. The council has gone through this document, line item by line item, on the 9th and the 10th, as I stated earlier. But, again, if something, if something has come up, I'll be happy to answer that question.
Councilmember Cadecle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's more of a comment. I want to thank Mr. Sabuda and his entire department, Chief Ashman, Assistant City Manager, Der shell Strickland-Love, and all the directors. Because, as Mr. Sabuda pointed out, there's a lot of work that goes into this, and we take it really serious, and we do go line by line by line. And I, again, I'm proud to say that it was part of another balanced budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I'd like to agree to thank everyone who worked on this budget. It is a document that I believe reflects the values and vision of the residents of this city. All our valued services continue, significant capital investment in the future, new and fairly expensive state mandates are funded, and the normal operating costs of the city will continue. It was a lengthy and tedious process for everyone, and our Finance Department led it very well. I think our new city manager, who will join us in a couple of weeks, will inherit a sound budget and a superb staff. He is a fortunate man. Any additional comments from anybody else? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 2216?
Cadecle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 14?
Resolution number R 2316, matter of authorizing amendments to the fiscal year 2015-2016 operating budget, those operating funds as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R 2316?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Baker, support by Councilmember Cadecle. And we're back to the Deputy City Manager again.
And we're back to David with budget amendments. Current budget year.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Manager and Mayor and council members. Thank you for your patience. This is the last item. What you have before you this evening deals with the 2015-16 operating budget, the current fiscal year. There are nine amendments across multiple funds. Revenues are, these nine amendments drive revenues up $1,525 and draw expenses down by $950. In this set of amendments, what we try to do is find other appropriation that we're not going to use and apply it to those line items that do need appropriation. And we, and we go through that so that we don't needlessly utilize fund balance or encumber fund balance in situations where we don't need it. So, with that, item A is in the General Fund. What we're looking to do here is fund, fund the legal labor. We use, we use the legal, the labor attorney extensively. His bills are now finishing up, and we're looking to increase that line item by $25,600. And then, the city manager was not here, so we utilized those appropriated, those appropriations for that line item, and applied $25,600 and the associated fringe benefits to the legal labor to come up with a zero increase. Item B, vehicles. What has happened here is we received a refund on vehicle expenses for the public safety scout cars, so we're increasing appropriation to offset the duplicate, I should say, the refund that we received on the expenses that were incurred earlier. Item C, we are appropriating for an ID printer-laminator in the Public Safety Department. So, that ran $1,600, and then what, or I'm sorry, $1,500, and then the program supply within the Public Safety Department is funding that, funding that appropriation. Item D, you'll find business license revenue up $1,525, and business license inspections up, another $350. So, with the additional revenue comes the additional expense, the revenue will offset the expense, all dealing with business license inspections. Item E, you're looking at office equipment. This is really a good news story. What's happening here is the line item is coming down $12,350. Most of it is, is due to the fiber-optic cable project coming in under budget, which is really nice. However, what we're also doing here is not doing the digital signage replacement project, and in its place, purchasing a new camera, camera, and ancillary equipment associated with the council chambers, I can see it up there right now, and another handheld camera for WBRK. So, with all that washout, we're going to, with the two projects swapping out, saving $4,000 there, and then also the, the fiber-optic cable line coming in under budget, we're, we're saving about $12,350 in appropriation on line item E, or Budget Amendment E, excuse me. On Budget Amendment F, we have the city planner. This evening, you went through the public hearing regarding the parking lots associated with Eaton Street, and there's engineering, our engineering requirements in accordance with that arrangement. There will be more surveying work that we're responsible with that collaboration agreement for $3,700. We will use fund balance from the General Fund to fund that, fund that work. Moving into the Solid Waste Fund, and G, you can see where there were additional totes and yard waste containers that we had to purchase, and we are reducing another line item within that fund to offset that cost. Item H, you can see, in the Arena Fund, we had an alarm service that was instituted at the arena. The arena is finding it in another line item in order to offset that, that alarm service cost. And finally, the last item, I, what's happening here is you have unanticipated vehicle maintenance costs at the Water Sewer Fund for $26,000. However, the arena, or the Water Sewer Fund is able to offset that out of the program supply and engineering line item. And also, we were charged a special assessment for the Red Run Drain. We're a small, very small piece of a very large puzzle there, and our assessment was $5,350 that we weren't aware of, that we were going to, they cleaned the Red Run Drain, and we received our assessment. So, with that, we had to set up the appropriation in order to pay that. And with that, Your Honor, that concludes the presentation. If you have any answered any questions?
Thank you. Any specific questions? Basically, what that all means is we're cleaning up the accounts and making everything line up.
That is correct.
In proper order.
Yes, sir.
Very good. If there are no questions, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 2316?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Cadecle?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and our Mayor Protem is up first.
Thank you, Your Honor, and hello again, everybody. Good evening. Just a couple of quick thoughts. First, I'm sure I'll be the first of many to thank and congratulate the volunteers and the participants in the past weeks, Berkeley Day celebrations and, and events. I know the weather wasn't necessarily on our side for this, this particular one, at least not the entire time. We had pockets of delightful weather, followed by pockets of snow in the middle of May. Go figure. But, you know, folks engaged in that with a cheerful smile and a can-do attitude, and really made the most of the opportunity there. So, so I'm sure I'm just the first of many to offer our gratitude and appreciation for, for all the work that goes into that, which was fantastic. Also, thanks to the Historical Committee for their dedication and focus in setting up and running, and then safely taking down a delightful series of exhibits pertaining to our city's history. This was celebrating the 90th anniversary of the Berkeley Days event, which started back in 1926, and so many additional exhibits were there. And, and thanks to those who found some of the items for sale to be of interest, and taking some of those home with you, and for paying for them, which is always good. That was $300 additional dollars that go directly to benefit the museum for additional artifacts and, and displays and things like that. So, thanks for your continued support. And speaking of looking to the future, we, many months ago, based on a comprehensive facility study for all of the buildings throughout, the municipal buildings throughout the city, formed a subcommittee to look at our City Hall facility in particular. Recently, we received a series of bids from 10 different companies as a part of the process. And this week, we will be working to, to review those and narrow down the list a bit as another step in, in that process as well. Just wanted to give this board an update that we continue with that progress, and, and we look forward to, to reviewing that. And, and as that process, if it were to, to go a lot further, we would certainly continue to engage not only with the employees who called us their home away from home and spend so much time here, but also to the residents and the contractors and other businesses that, that frequent this facility on a regular basis, so that we can provide both the, the type of vision and, and image that, that our city deserves and needs, and also a very comfortable and welcoming and safe environment for, for our employees who, who work so hard to provide services for the city. And finally, it was Raymond Kroc who once wrote, "You're only as good as the people you hire." "You're only as good as the people you hire." And I'd like to offer that on many fronts, but in particular, to, to the work on the Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, as was mentioned, as part of the budget, which You're only as good as the people you hire. And I'd like to offer that on many fronts, but in particular, to the work on the Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, as was mentioned, as part of the budget, which has just been through the process here. They're looking to bring on board some type of a DDA manager role to help promote and advocate the great things that we have in the city, to help support the businesses that have chosen Berkeley as their home, and to reach out and attract and recruit new businesses to join us here, to get, to go proactive, if you will, to kind of get out there and market our city and show all the great things that we have. We're very excited about that, and I want to thank the Chair, Allen Simonion, for his leadership throughout not only that particular decision-making process, but the entirety of the work that they do throughout our downtown. They formed a committee to lean into the Robina Plaza project, to see how we can continue to move that forward now that we have some engineering renderings from that piece. And for his work in nominating members to this, to the Coolidge Action Task Force, which my colleague is chairing on our behalf, which is fantastic. So that's great. So when we think about the kinds of people that we bring into the city to work, to make this the fantastic place that it is, and even better going forward, I'm very appreciative and thankful to all of you for being a part of this, being a part of this budget, making it all happen, and here's to another great fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Stedman.
Just a couple of things. I'd like to also say that Berkeley Days was wonderful, in spite of the cool weather that came in. Friday night was absolutely great. It was very crowded there. I think a lot of people, you know, had predicted that there would not be good weather the rest of the weekend, so the line was probably about, I don't know, three or four hundred feet long. The Taste of Berkeley on Thursday night was absolutely wonderful. The food was delicious. There was a lot of restaurants there. It was really nice to be able to meet with all of our friends and neighbors and taste all of the restaurants in Berkeley, or many of them. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to mention that the City Council, along with the Berkeley Days Committee, had an interesting event Friday evening at the horseshoe pitching thing, and so just to make sure that the record is set forth properly, we did win that event.
Right.
And we're still practicing and getting ready for next year, so. I'd also like to acknowledge the Berkeley Days Citizen of the Year Shirley Hansen and the Humanitarian of the Year Lyda Gusway, and thank them for the services that they've given to the city, because they've both been volunteers for many, many years and have done wonderful things. And as you all know, we can't function in this city without our volunteers. Now that we've concluded Berkeley Days, or was it Winterfest, we can look forward to Art Bash, which is the next chamber project, which will be on June 11th, and that'll be the same time as Lids for Kids will be held here in the station parking lot, so we're hoping to see a lot of people come up with their children and their bicycles and get through the information classes that we have here and how to ride their bicycles and go out downtown and spend the rest of their money on the vendors downtown. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gravlin.
I too would like to commend the Berkeley Days Committee. They did an excellent job, and was, I was glad to be part of the horseshoe throwing on Friday night, but I didn't embarrass myself too badly and bring a win in for our team. I would also like to once again commend Mr. Sabuda for helping walk me through the budget this year. It's been a bit of a baptism by fire. I sworn in one week, budget the next, throwing horseshoes by the end of the week. So I feel like I had a lot in my first couple of weeks, and I'd like to thank you all for your patience in helping me get up to speed. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadakal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things today. First of all, Josephine's feeling under the weather, that's why she's not here, so holla Josephine and feel better soon, please. Berkeley Days was amazing, from the run to the budget hearings, to even the softball game. It was a great game. We're getting closer, but it was an awesome game. Taste of Berkeley this year had two hundred people, raised a little over five thousand dollars. We had fourteen restaurants. We had the American Legion there, serving wine for us. And I want to thank everybody that attended, everybody that participated. There's going to be a lot of kids going to camp because of everyone's efforts, and that's very gratifying. Speaking of Berkeley Days, it was mentioned by her husband, Ron Van Hughesen, yesterday was Helen's first birthday in heaven, and it really is strange, looking around Berkeley Days, not seeing her at the horseshoe pits and throughout the area. And Ron, my thoughts are with you. Dad's Club Opening Day is June 4th. The parade will be going from the high school to the community center. There will be prizes, refreshments, raffle. It's at ten o'clock. They have the Berkeley Day, or excuse me, the Dad's Club raffles. And again, it's going to be at Community One, the ceremonies. Wednesday, next Wednesday, on the 25th, a reminder that we have the Oxford Park Planning Meeting, and that will be from nine to eleven a.m. or six to eight p.m., and we hope to see as many people there for their input. Memorial Day, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Day. The ceremonies will be here at eleven o'clock in front of City Hall, followed by...
Ceremonies at the Legion Post at twelve o'clock.
I was going to say that.
I'm saying, I'm holding it up for you.
Oh, okay. And the ceremonies will continue at twelve o'clock at the American Legion. He was here earlier. I wish he would have stayed, but I want to wish State Representative Robert Whittenburg and his bride-to-be this coming Sunday, congratulations as they're getting married. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager.
I wanted to take this opportunity to, as we're getting ready for Matt Baumgarten to appear magically in City Hall, take this opportunity to thank Chief Ashman for his leadership and for just being a really good partner to work with during this time. We've had a few challenges. We've come through them, I think, quite well. But having the support of a person who you work really well with and who you just gel with is really a wonderful thing. And so I want to thank you for putting him in that position and allowing me to have this opportunity to work so closely with him. So Chief, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say the Taste of Berkeley was a wonderful event. We had a great time. My wife and I, we tasted all the vendors and all the food that they offered, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful day, wonderful, wonderful evening. The ballgame was terrific. It was just an honor and so much fun to play with everyone, you know, on the ballfield there, and especially playing with my daughter. It was just excellent. Just, you can't, you just can't get that anywhere. It's just a wonderful time, wonderful feeling. I too would like to thank Chief Ashman. He did a great job, outstanding work, a tremendous leader, and we really had a nice, nice transition. Also, Darrell Strickland-Love, she did a very nice job also. It was a pleasure working with you also, did a great job during that transition period. Also, finally, with the budget, from the top on down, thank you very much. The council was outstanding. The Department Heads were terrific. Everyone pitched in, and it was a total, truly, team effort, and I want to thank everyone for all their cooperation and hard work and dedication on the project. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chief.
Truth be told, Darrell did about ninety percent of the heavy lifting here, and it's I who owe the appreciation to her. She's a total, absolute professional. It's been a pleasure. Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you, Chief.
She made it very easy. Finance Director, I owe him a thank you for his diligence and hard work in preparing a thorough, comprehensive budget. In the past, my experience was limited to, well, the wish lists for my own department, if you would. Having sat in the manager's chair gives a much different perspective. It's an eye-opener. And working with Annette has been a pleasure. And Council, John, so I thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just briefly mention a couple new legal developments that council members may have seen something about, reported in the papers over the last few days. They involve other communities, but they're matters of interest to Berkeley. First is the report that we all remember our August 2014, the Great Storm flood event. We had anticipated at that time that there may be claims, even litigation. A lot of work was done at the staff level. I remember Darrell had boxes and boxes of information accumulating in her office. Nothing has come of it thus far for Berkeley, but it was reported in the paper that Royal Oak and Claussen have been sued. So we'll be watching that closely, since we, you know, we experienced the same storm event that they did. The other development actually involves Orion Township. And, but it's a, it arises out of a complaint that some of our residents here in Berkeley share too, and that is, we in this community and in other communities occasionally get complaints about those free newspaper advertisements, like the Free Press Select and so on, that magically show up on our driveways or our lawns or near our mailboxes. To many people, perhaps they enjoy them or they're no big deal. To others, it's quite bothersome and litters their lawns, or we've had cases where they've clogged people's snow blowers and that sort of thing. There are obvious First Amendment issues involved with regulating such things. There are some court decisions which seem very limiting as to what local governments can do to regulate that type of activity. But it was reported in the paper, again, I think in the Free Press just within the last few days, that Orion Township did take action, ordinance enforcement action for littering against the Detroit Free Press. Detroit Free Press has turned around and filed a federal civil rights action against Orion Township. So that's another case that we will be monitoring. It affects not only Orion Township, but, you know, again, we've heard those same types of complaints here in Michigan and I'm sure elsewhere throughout the state, local governments have been hearing those complaints. So we'll be watching that case with interest to see what type of case law or result arises out of that, and I'll keep you informed as it goes along.
Chief.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to have been sitting in the manager's seat for seven months. Thank you. And I'd like to point out one more thing that I'm most proud of, most pleased with having been able to do in that seven months, and that was to create the position of Assistant City Manager and to have someone like Darrell to put into it. It'll be very pleasurable in the future, calling her boss. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Chief. Well, finally, you know, I'd like to join my colleagues in thanking everybody for a wonderful Berkeley Days, and particularly Denise Brainerd and her team of volunteers, who did, again, a superb job. Taste of Berkeley was a great success. Councilmember Kadakal did a wonderful job there and gathered up significant money that helps young people, and that's the goal, that's the purpose, to allow them to get to camp and have experiences that advance their development. I am obliged to report that our baseball team played superbly well, and we narrowly lost. We're getting closer as every year goes by. But the council did capture the horseshoe title, and we will be expecting a visit from Denise Brainerd as she delivers the trophy to City Hall. And we will make her very welcome, and we'll make sure that's on her schedule in the next couple of meetings. But we had fun, and that's the main thing. Everybody had fun, and the community had fun, and it's basically a party for our city. And finally, this evening, we marked the ending of Tina Edgar's service on the council. And so, on behalf of all the residents of the city, I would like to express our gratitude for her service on council. Not everyone who seeks public office should be entrusted with its responsibility. It does matter that our leaders place our welfare, our safety, and the quality of life ahead of some obscure ideology. Tina's enduring commitment to achieving the best for Berkeley keeps that promise alive in our democracy. I think we need that. And so we wish her continued success as she contributes in the future to wherever community she finds herself. And we then, of course, welcome Councilmember Gravlin to fill those shoes, and so far, she's done superbly well. You should see her throwing horseshoes. That was one of the big tests. So, and working your way through the budget. So you did jump into the deep end of the pool, but you have done very, very well, and I thank you for that. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadakal?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the role?
Baker?